Good evening, everyone. We are here at the Monroeville Planning Commission, evening of April 19th. We are here. Sharon, we have some new members possibly that we may want to discuss later on in voting in. But as of right now, can we all stand for a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the moment, silence. Roll call.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. or Ms. Montgomery?
Here.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Massong?
Here.
Mr. Bertoni?
Here.
Ms. Lewisburg?
Here.
Mr. Weldon?
Here.
Okay, we'd like to go to the next step on the approval of minutes from last week, the regular meeting dated March 15th, 2003, I'm sorry, 2023. Does anyone have any questions, or has ever anyone had the opportunity to read last month's meetings, and any concerns or issues on that?
Motion that we accept as is.
I'll second.
Okay. This is the, Sharon.
Is it all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Sharon, I'm not sure if you're going to fall in place here with the three positions that we had available. The chairman is myself, the new openings, and we have a vice chair, Heidi, who is to my right, and Bruce, your secretary, off to my left. I'm not sure, do you want to take a vote on these positions?
For the reorganization, do you want to do each one individually, or do you want to vote on all three at one time?
You can do it either way, it's fine.
All right, we can do them all.
Let's do it all three at once.
Okay, so for the new chair, it's going to be Lambertoni, vice chair is Heidi, and secretary is going to be Bruce. And then just motion, all in favor?
All motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We got a very new crew here, and we have one new member that will probably be joining us next month, so we got a bunch of new people, so it's going to be a little rough going here until we get into our groove, but we'll get there.
Okay, turn the new business over to Paul.
Okay, our first item tonight, item number one, 23-3-C, Terry Smith, around four o'clock this afternoon, she emailed me and withdrew her application. So number one is withdrawn.
Okay.
We don't need to take any action on that, so we'll go to number two. 23-2-S-T, municipality of Monroeville Valley Park. Applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a pedestrian bridge, pavilion, and restroom facility. The property is located at 1268 Abrams Creek Road, tax parcel ID 1108P047, in the S Conservancy zoning district. And the applicant is here. Well, you're not the applicant, you're the engineer for the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just sign our names down here.
And state your name, please.
Okay, my name is Martha Frack. I am a professional engineer. I am owner and president of Streamline Engineering. You want to introduce yourself?
My name is Kerry Frack. I'm a senior engineer with Streamline Engineering.
Did you say Gary?
Kerry.
Kerry.
K-E-R-R-Y.
Okay.
And we have been engaged by the municipality of Monroeville to do the site plan approval applications, and also to do the joint permit application for the, through the state to get a, the pedestrian approvals for the pedestrian bridge across the Turtle Creek River. So what we are, just to explain a little bit, we are on Valley, I borrowed this from my cat, by the way. My other one was dead, and I'm like, oh, we'll just do this one. So anyway, Valley Park is located along Abrams Creek Road, towards the north, is heading down up to 22, and over here is Saunders Station, where there's a trailhead for the Heritage Trail. And the Heritage Trail is on the south side of Turtle Creek. Turtle Creek is right in the middle here, along this way, and it flows, I'm sorry, towards the west. And so there's residential locations here, and here is pretty wooded, it has remained wooded. So we're right here on Abrams Creek Road, Valley Creek, or Valley Park, and right now the existing conditions is that it's a skate park, and there's a lot of parking areas where it's almost impervious and gravel areas. And we're just, it's, the property is about 14.2 acres, and we're just going to work on about 1.3 acres total of the park area. So most of the work that we are planning, and we'll talk about each element a little bit, is that, the first thing is this pedestrian bridge. So on this, which is a little bit closer look, here is the pedestrian bridge that goes and spans across Turtle Creek, and it goes from Valley Park and connects to the Heritage Trail. The span of that structure is going to be about 90, 92 feet, 91 and a half feet, across Turtle Creek, and then there is a ramp from the Valley Park area to the bridge, which is going to be about 65 feet. The elevation difference from the park up to the level of the bridge is about four feet, so to make this handicap accessible, we would have to have a five-foot landing in between. So what we have is a span of 30 feet, then a landing of five foot, and another span of 30 feet to get up to the bridge. And then over here, we are tight because we have the Heritage Trail, that we have a landing, a five-foot landing here, and then we have ramps, you can see really kind of close here, that a ramp on either side to hit, to blend in with the Heritage Trail. So the other park amenities, well, one thing I wanted to show, we did a HACRAAS analysis, or hydrology, hydraulic analysis, to see how this bridge structure, and also the other elements that's going to be in the park, how that they affect the 100-year flood, and we showed no increases in the 100-year flood plane. So there'll be no request from BMO for changes, and that would be something that we have to get through to DEP. All right. This is just a picture, we took a picture and, of the stream, and you can see, this is what maybe the pedestrian bridge may have looked like. It's a rendering from Lynx Bridges, we call Lynx Bridges, and that was one of the bridges that we considered. It's a, Kerry, would you like to elaborate on that? What kind of materials?
Lynx Bridges does a lot of bridges with golf courses, places we've had, they're very cognizant of being aesthetically pleasing and durable, trying to minimize maintenance. This is a steel and aluminum truss structure that crosses here, and ramp also is. The decking is a fiberglass with a gel coating, so it prevents the, cuts down a lot on the abrasion of the fiberglass, so you don't get the fibers and the other stuff coming up through the surface. They're one of the few manufacturers that actually put this gel coating on the top of fiberglass itself. It's a wood finish, so it would look like wood, but it's actually fiberglass.
Okay.
Okay. So the, and one thing to note, do you want to thunder? One thing to note is that the reason why that we are not showing an increase in the 100-year flood plane, too, is because the escape park that is enclosed by the galvanized fence, that becomes an obstruction during the 100-year. And so we take that out, we would be able to then be able to put in the bridge without any increases. So it sort of, sort of replaces that obstruction, but it, that's why we do not have an increase. So the existing conditions of the park is that there is a skate park here, and then there's asphalt, and there's a lot of gravel areas, and of course, next to it is the soccer fields, but we're not touching the soccer fields. So the plan is to remove the, like I said, the asphalt, and to replace it with topsoil and grass, and then have some pavers here to make a more decorative walkway, have a paved lot, and then the two structures that we're really looking and concentrating on is a bathroom, or a his and hers bathroom. And then we also have a pavilion, which is a 30-foot by 30-foot pavilion. This is a elevation plan view, a plan view and an elevation view of the bathroom. What we are planning with 19 spaces of parking lot, we have to have at least two being handicap. And so right next to that, we were hope, we planned to have a handicap ramp to the bathroom. The reason why we have the bathroom basically more on an elevate, it's pretty flat in there, but we have the bathroom elevated a few feet, so that we can get the first floor above the 100-year elevation. And then we're, we're right, our first floor of the bathrooms are basically straight, almost, slightly above the 100-year, but what, so minimize the feel, that we decided that as long as the toilets themselves are above that, that regulated one and a half feet above the 100-year, that we would fit the code. And so we got the zoning approved on that. So that's the plan. We don't have to have a landing on here because the elevation distance for this only requires a 30-foot ramp, and so that makes it ADA compliant. Then Kerry, would you like to talk about the, well, I'll say one more thing. The other structure that we're talking about is adding in a pavilion at this location. So what we'll do is we'll talk a little bit more about the materials of the different features, and Kerry?
Don't give me that.
Okay, you don't want it? Okay.
Start with the, well, just saying, here's the view of the bridge itself. You can see the wood finish that they show on the railing there, or between the railings. The restroom is a prefabricated two-unit structure constructed of concrete. It's basically brought in, put down, you spend a few hours hooking it up, and it's good to go. It has electrical, water, sanitary sewer hookups already built into it. All the electrical and the plumbing and mechanical things are elevated up off the floor above the 100-year, plus the regulatory flood elevation. So it's made to basically come in, put down in site, and the next day you're good to go with its use. It's concrete, it's vandal resistant, it's water resistant. The wood finish is actually put into the concrete itself, so it's not, it is all concrete, but it has a woodsy appearance to it. It will, it's totally ADA compliant, has a drinking fountain on the outside, which is what Allegheny County Health Department requires, and
And sinks.
And sinks. And there's a chase room in between the two, that's where all the mechanical, electrical equipment is, so they're not exposed to people actually using the bathrooms. So if you look at the electrical panel, or check the plumbing and that, it's all in this chase area that's in between the two bathrooms. Again, it's a two-unit structure. It's connected to the Elka San sanitary sewer, which runs along Turtle Creek on the park side. That is a requirement of Elka San and the Monroeville Municipal Authority, because of the distance that it is, within 150 feet, it has to be tied into a sanitary sewer. And we are within that limit.
And the pavilion?
Pavilion? The pavilion is an open roof, or it's a roof structure, it's open. These are just some manufacturer concepts for it. It's going to be a structure about 30 feet by 30 feet. Mr. Estock was thinking on the idea of having four picnic tables in that area, that's, so he didn't want to make it too obstrusive than that. It's open structure, it's just supported on pillars, so it offers minimal flow resistance to flows going through there. It is also, again, water resistant and vandal resistant to the extent that something like that could be. I think that's it for the structures.
Any questions, anyone?
Yeah, I have one. What's the width of the bridge going to be?
The width is going to be four foot wide.
Four foot?
Clear, four foot wide, clear.
And then are you going to have walls or railing?
Yeah, there's a rail, and I believe it's at least 42 inches.
42 inches high.
Yeah, high, so.
22 inches.
Forty-two.
Forty-two inches, okay.
I have a question in regards to the automobiles. Obviously, you're going to have people at some point coming down, I guess, driving into the area, from where they would be putting their vehicles, and they would be going, doing whatever they're doing, the trails, and so forth. What is the distance from like where they would be parking their cars to where they would start to trail?
Probably about 200 feet.
Okay, so I guess when I'm getting at, I was concerned that there would be vehicles there, and then, you know, a large volume of water could come down, and is there any danger of those vehicles getting flooded or anything like that?
Well, this whole area is in the flood plain. I mean, what's, the existing parking lot that's there, and the soccer fields, everything in there is an existing flood plain.
Okay.
The flood plain does extend from the Turtle Creek all the way to the other side of Abrams Creek Road, to the hillside of Abrams Creek Road. So that's all a flood plain.
Okay, but you said for water to even begin to get to where it would get to the cars, it would be about 200 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
All the parking area is up alongside, or along Abrams Creek Road.
Okay.
So nobody's driving into the park getting any closer than that.
Yeah, we propose to have bollards to prevent vehicles from driving to the pavilion.
Okay.
This actually pushes the park, the current parking out closer to the road than it is now. Right now, the parking goes back to the, back towards the creek.
Repairing corridors.
Yeah, so this actually pulls it up further away from the creek, yeah.
Further back, okay.
Yeah, great.
Any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, the bollards, they're the ones that are already at various places on the trail.
I'm sorry, what?
The bollards, they're like the same
Oh, bollards, oh. We could, yes. Right now, we have it, it's concrete still, but
And this extends into Murraysville, Westmoreland County, is that, they're on board?
Yes, right. So we had talked to Murraysville, and they said we would not have to go through any planning or any kind of approvals, that they had talked, was it Emily Malice, I think, the zoning officer there, and she said that we're fine. And then we also talked to Westmoreland County Parks and Recreation, and they're on board with this without having to go through any other requirements. I mean, we are going through sewer modules, planning, we are going through, we have to go through the joint permit application for chapter 105. We have to go through the chapter 106, because you're a borough, and we're doing that in the flood plain, we're doing work in the flood plain. And we already got water approval from the MMA for hookups, and we're doing NPDS permit because we are more than one acre of disturbance, so there's a lot of environmental permits that we're dealing with.
Okay. Anyone else? Any concerns, any thoughts?
Love it.
Anybody from the audience?
That's what I thought.
Anybody from the audience have any comments or questions?
Anyone? Also including the audience, any comments? No, okay. Take a vote?
Entertain a motion?
Please.
Motion to approve? I'll second the motion.
Approve?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last item tonight is 23-3-S-T, HF Lens Company, this is in Boyce Park. Applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a climbing wall, and, or let me start over here. Applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct climbing walls, plural, and a BMX track. The property is located at 675 Old Frankstown Road, tax parcel ID 975L100, in the S Conservancy zoning district.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How are you?
Well.
Good, good.
My name is Andy Beckley, I'm the county parks director. Thanks for your time tonight. I'm here to respectfully ask for site plan approval, pending any comments on your letter. This will be at Boyce Park, it'll be in the parking lot by the swimming pool, where we have the three Bs, bikes, blades, and boards. It'll be a series of seven boulders that are different heights, the highest one is 14 feet, three of them will have roofs on it. We were hoping to go with the traditional climbing wall, but we felt that was not, we wanted it to be free and open to the public, and we couldn't offer that without having somebody there to watch it and monitor it for
What's the difference between a traditional wall?
A climbing wall would have, would be a lot higher, it'd have ropes that you attach to, things like that. These are just boulders that you climb sideways on, more or less, or you can climb up them.
That's 14 feet?
Highest one is 14 feet. They'll have fall surface underneath them, like a playground that is engineered to handle the fall.
Okay.
If we can afford it, right next to it, we want to put a pump track, so it would be the three Bs park, a pump track, which is a bicycle park, it just has little undulating hills on it.
Okay.
And then next to that would be the seven boulders. And then I have Luke here from HF Lens, if you have really any technical questions.
Well, I think you may have answered the one. I was, you know, concerned about how tall was going to be at its point, and if someone would fall, what precautions have been made to cushion the blow, or not let somebody get seriously injured?
It would be the fall surface.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that.
If you could state your name, please.
Yep, yep, my name's Luke Inelsberger, with HF Lens Company, or the civil engineer for the project. But as far as the safety structure, it's a rubber, like a rubber nugget kind of padding, and so that, for X amount of feet that you're in the air, there's a criteria on how deep that has to be.
Okay.
So that will be at minimum 18 inches deep of a fall rubber, and then underneath that, there will be a dirt layer before getting down to the foundations of the wall themselves. So there's going to be plenty of padding there, and that 18 inches should cover even the 14-foot fall. The landscape architect who's on the project, I apologize, they would know more in regards to that safety structure and how that's handled, but
It's a formula.
Yeah, there is, there is a specific criteria that we would have to meet for that.
Can you tell us, is that going to be like a welded-together mat, or is it going to be
It's going to be, so the, so for all the boulder walls, like there's boulder wall A, B, those, these dark orange areas, those will be a loose, it'll be like a loose rubber, but it's, there's going to be so much, it's kind of like, the best way I could explain it is pellets in a turf field, just bigger, if that makes sense. Now this over here, this play space, these will be kind of, it'll be that, it'll be like a one consistent layer, kind of, that playground padding that you would see around, you know, your
Swing sets and slides.
Swing sets, yeah.
One of my concerns is the loose stuff, you know, where you do see that in parks, it gets, in the high-traffic areas, it gets kicked away.
Yes.
You end up with a divot, so you're losing some of that safety factor. How often would that be maintained?
This would be, I mean, Andy, if you could elaborate on maintenance, the parks, I believe the parks constantly has, is maintaining
We would maintain it as needed.
Yeah.
This is our first climbing wall, I don't know.
But the, the fall areas themselves have a lip around that will, it's going to, you're going to come down into it, so there's going to be a little drop coming off of this sidewalk, maybe an inch or two, to where you're going to, hopefully that'll contain a lot of that issue to begin with. As far as the stormwater and how that all works, I could go into that if you guys would like. The site itself, so there are a series of area drains, they're not, we don't show these on this presentation, but there's a series of area drains through the low spots, through this whole pump track, and then also throughout all the low spots around the climbing area. Now, in the actual loose material safety surface, there is underdrains, so when that water falls, that whole, it's either going to get piped to this basin, the majority of the site gets piped to the large basin, a small area, including
Rain gardens.
Yes, the two rain gardens, bio retention basins, they, this whole thing, this all comes down and will sheet flow, then the underdrains through here are piped to this rain garden. That's all piped to an existing 24-inch pipe that actually handles all of the upslope drainage area as well. And so our goal is, by mitigating this site, and our flow is less in the post-development than it was in the pre-development, for this 1.6 acres, actually, the flow is reduced to this point for everything getting to it. Additionally, the skate park, all the skate park is piped to that single point. And about 15 years ago, there used to be a tennis court. It was all impervious, so we would absolutely not be sending any more flow than what was experienced years ago, so.
So the pump track and the climbing wall area all gets drained to the rain garden, and then from there, discharges to an existing pipe?
Yes, sir. So yeah, through a series of sheet flow and pipe flow to the rain gardens.
What do the rain gardens consist of?
They're a bio-soil mix. They also have rain garden plantings, which are, they're very, very good at handling a lot of water, and so basically, they're used to evapotransferate. There's a formula that we have to follow through the DEP, and also, as well as municipality of Monroeville, they have some sediment loading requirements that we have to meet, and that's how we meet those in our basins. The bio-soil acts as a filter, so when the, when the water hits the soil, it'll basically infiltrate down through. Now, there is not a whole lot of infiltration in the site, however, we design the basins in a manner that there is enough plantings that that water will de-water within a 72-hour period from the surface of the basin. Now, the bio soils will may be, they'll remain soaked, and that is what the DEP is really kind of going towards now. They want that groundwater recharge, so that's, that's kind of what we're implementing with these basins. Then, once the basins fill up, once they reach 18 inches above the basin bottom, they'll reach a series of orifices and go out through the outlet structure at a reduced rate than they were in the pre-development condition. And that will all go to that single 24-inch pipe, which currently, right now, is experiencing more flow than what our design will allow to exit the site.
What about the safety of the climbers on the wall? Is there going to be any sort of requirements or signs indicating that they have to wear, like, safety equipment, or, you know, they have to be accompanied by a parent, if it's a small child, running around in the park area there?
There'll be signs that say, "Use at your own risk." There'll be easy ones for kids to harder ones. Basically, it's a cement slab with boards that are sort of made in a circle.
Okay.
And then you can climb around it or climb up it. It'll be easy ones, hard ones, we even, we'll put a handicap route in. We also believe we can change those routes, but it's really use at your own risk, just like our three Bs park is, just like really everything in our parks, you use it at your own risk.
Okay.
But it'll be signed.
My understanding is the walls will have handhelds, and those handhelds will be adjustable whenever the park wants to come out.
They're screwed in.
Yeah, and so that was something Yeah, and so that was something as, you know, you won't have the same walls for years and years and years. You'll be able to take those handhelds and put them in different orientations.
We want people to keep coming back to it. And it can be.
It'll be a new challenge.
The other safety feature.
You're able to change it up all the time.
Which, yeah, these are just screwed in, you know. The other thing we try to do to make safety is we don't want anybody to climb over the top and in behind it. So three of them, the three tallest ones have roofs on them. So you can just climb up and touch the roof. You know, so if you're here, 14 feet, your feet are probably three or four feet below.
Right, you have no choice but to start going back down.
Correct. And there'll also be routes that are color-coded for easy and routes that are color-coded for a little more difficult.
So there's six?
Seven boulders.
Seven boulders.
Yeah, small boulder G is down here. And I think it's just a kind of a, you know.
And how many of these are out there? How many of these are in existence?
We think we'll have the first one that's free to the public. There's about six gyms in Pittsburgh that have indoor climbing walls that are very similar to this. We've been working with some of them for advice and how they manage them and things like that. But in this region is the first one that I'm aware of.
Do you have plans to put them in some of the other county parks?
We'll see how this one goes. This one's pretty expensive. I'm hoping we can, the wall is a priority. We're hoping we have enough money to put the pump track in. And then it's really sort of gravity central, just the park director and me, almost all recreation can be either ball sports or gravity sports. You know, either the puck or a ball or something, or somehow plays with the gravity. And we're trying to bring sports that are, not everybody's into team sports. So this is an individual sport. It's like skiing, whitewater rafting, mountain biking. It all has to do with gravity. And this will be gravity central with those three places. There'll be nothing like it in any of our nine parks.
Additionally, just one last thing. This existing facility, we do plan on renovating it and using it. It is an existing restroom facility right now. That's all it'll be used for.
It hasn't been flushed for 20 years. It was when it was tennis courts were there.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll need some revamping, but the whole goal is just to utilize it at its current use.
Okay.
Andy, do you have a cost on this?
I don't. We already bought the wall. I think it was around $800,000. And then it really had to have two Pella paths, one for the site work, where the guy's going to come in and grade the dirt, put the sidewalks in, create these big cement pads that will attach these walls to. That's out to bid, so we don't know what that's going to be.
Okay. And when do you think you'll be starting?
Well, we've already bought the wall, and it's under design. And the, and the, the site work is out. If I know what's good for me, it'll be done by the end of the year. My boss gets out of power. But we'll start it probably this summer sometime.
That'll be after we have all permits in line, especially the earth-moving permit, NPDS and all that, which we have submitted for, and it's under preliminary review, so.
What is the phasing of your project? So this one will start first with the bouldering, and then when do you hope to do the pump track?
If we can afford it, we'll do both at the same time. We, the pump track is an ad alternate, so we have found, a lot of things are coming in way higher than the estimates from the engineers. You know, so that's why we have that as an ad alternate. But if we can't, it'll be built at the same time. We want to have a ribbon cutting by November.
Nice.
And that's all considered under the same NPDS permit?
Right.
That's not phased.
Any other questions? Any questions in the audience, from the audience? Concerns?
I do. The availability to use the facility from beginning to the end of the day, when?
Our parks, that park's open from dawn to dusk. We're open every day of the year. We never close. And it'll be only closed if it's unsafe, if it's wet or something like that. It'll be fenced in, just like the skateboard park. When the skateboard park is wet, we lock the gate. And when it's not wet, we leave the gate open. And if we find that the climate conditions, but it'll be open every day of the year, free to the public.
Those roofs help during the cold rainy months.
Keep some of the wall dry.
Some of those walls, yeah, those walls will remain dry, and they'll be, you know, able to be utilized during the colder months.
It's really one of the neatest things we've done in a long time. I'm hoping it looks as good as it does on paper.
There you go.
Sure will.
Okay, would we like to take a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Aye, motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay.
Approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you for your time.
Did you sign in? Did you sign in?
I signed in, he did not.
And we also have a motion for an adjournment. Are we through here today?
That's it.
I have nothing. Make a motion.
Motion, second act?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.